Good evening. Welcome to November 28th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. If we could please first stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Needless to say, we really have a packed house tonight. All right, first, we have some correspondence. Anybody have concerns, questions?
None.
None here?
Then we got the meeting minutes of November 14th, 2022. Any issues, corrections?
None here.
Okay. Then the motion to work, open the work session portion of the meeting.
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Can we approve the minutes?
Oh, we didn't.
Motion to approve the minutes?
We're moving too fast.
We've motioned to approve the meeting minutes of November 14th. Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're waiting for you, Joe. Yep. Okay, now we had a motion to move into the work session. There was a second. All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
First on the agenda, number three, we have a town board referral. Location's 800 East Main Street. This is Development AMC LLC.
Hi.
Good evening.
How are you?
Members of the board, for the record, my name is Janet Garrus. I'm a partner with Del Bello, Danelle and Weingarten, Weizen, Widicker, here this evening on behalf of the petitioner. As you know, this is a petition that was referred to you from the town board. And it's related to the property located at 800 East Main Street. It's an approximately 35-acre parcel of land located in the OB District. And on behalf of the petitioner, we've asked the town board for some modifications to the zoning map and also some modifications to the RSP2 district to permit that property to be redeveloped with a senior citizen development. Intended to be approximately 250 units, depending on how the market is. Approximately 200 of those will be rental, approximately 50 of those will be a for-sale product. Stuart Lacks is our project architect. He's got a presentation that he can put up for you and walk through the various components of the project. Also joining me this evening, Ryan Sutherland with AMS Acquisitions. They are the related entity of the petitioner. And he can talk to you a little bit about AMS, what they've done, where they're doing it, some of the other similar things, some other similar projects that they've done. Then Stuart can present to you the project that we're proposing for this property, and then we can answer any additional questions you might have. And I think what we're looking for from you is a recommendation back to the town board, positive one hopefully, on the rezoning to allow the project to go forward.
Thank you.
And then just to say that if in fact that zoning is adopted by the town board, we would be back to this board for a site plan approval in connection with the overall project.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
Good evening.
As Stuart's firing up the presentation, I'll just let you know a little bit about AMS. So we were formed in 2012, mostly focusing on development in Manhattan. Smaller properties working our way up to larger developments around 2016, where we worked on a couple of condominium projects in the city. I'll walk you through those when we have the presentation. Around 2016, we began to look at suburban markets, namely Yonkers and Bayonne. Right now in Yonkers, we're going through rezoning for 3,500 units and nine residential towers. Hopefully, our approval will come early next year. Really excited about that project. In addition to that, we were projecting in Bayonne, New Jersey, for around 250 units that received site plan approval on earlier this year. And then around the same time in 2016, we began looking at smaller markets where we can bring larger impact, particularly in the 55-plus active adult community. So we built a project in Sayerville, New Jersey. Two buildings, around 75 units. Then beyond that, we have a couple of other sites in New Jersey as well, where we're looking to build 124 units in Evesham. That's breaking ground this month, also 55-plus active adult. And then we have a project in East Brunswick as well. It's 100 units, four buildings. That's a market rate project, but we have quite a bit going on. And beyond the New Jersey region, we started looking to Westchester heavily and really fell in love with the site in Yorktown. It's a beautiful site. If you've been up there, you know it's like its own little world. And we see a great opportunity to repurpose, you know, what is now a vacant site into something that's a great asset to the community. So with that, I'd like to get us started and...
Thank you. I'll put that there. Thank you for your patience while I wrestled with the technology. Stuart Lacks, architect with Perkins Eastman out of Stanford. I guess that's your...
Yeah, so I already went over that. I don't know which screen everybody's looking at. Maybe I'll go over here.
You can't talk over here.
You're gonna get yelled at.
Oh, Tom.
Talking point here, is that okay?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, so I'll spend some more time on these. These are projects in Manhattan. This is 75 Ken Merritts, 31 units of condominium project. Do I like? So yeah, this is 75 Ken Merritts in Manhattan. It's 31 units completed, and there's two units left to be sold in this. I don't want to focus on these because these are, you know, very different from what we're doing in Yorktown.
As bright as can be.
Okay. So this is another project. So this is actually in construction now. Another 31 units in Manhattan, almost completely sold out pre-TCO, which has been a great project for us. And this is right around when we started looking at markets outside of Manhattan and making a shift there. So this is the project in Sayerville, New Jersey that I mentioned. Two buildings, around 75 units, built, stabilized, and then subsequently sold to another operator. So this is our project in East Brunswick, New Jersey. This is a four-building site. 96 units, 75% market rate, 25% affordable, under construction now. The first building should be finished early next year and then one month thereafter, so being complete by the end of the first quarter of 2023. So this is just a kind of construction progress picture. So this is our project in Evesham, 124 units. This is active adult, 55-plus. We're breaking ground on this this month. We expect to complete it in around 20 months. This is kind of the look and feel and quality of the expected building in Yorktown. Luxury, great finishes, great amenities, just a fantastic 55-plus active adult community. And one thing that we've dug into a bit is the construction side. We just started a GC entity of AMS, so we're actually going to be building our projects now. We brought on Jeff Perlman from Avalon Bay. He was with them for around 17 years. He built a bunch of their communities up and down the East Coast. And he ran the New Jersey arm for around eight years before joining us. So great asset, and we think it streamlines the process of development and construction, start to finish. With that, I'll turn to Stuart.
Thank you. So aerial view of the site. This is looking from the north-south. You see the Hutch, I mean the Teconic along the bottom and right side as well, and some of the existing office buildings on the site, and then the adjacent parkland, and obviously Jefferson Valley and the mall beyond. This is our proposed site plan. Overall, 250 units. There are, sorry, about 200 units, I'll say in this part forward, which are currently anticipated to be rentals, and then about 50 units that's sort of just left of center. That would be townhouses, and as we're showing, more than six acres of open space. That's the northern end of the site. So just for orientation here, north is to the left, the Hutch, I keep saying the Hutch, the Teconic along the bottom edge, and Route 6 is just off the page to the right. And here, in combination with both the six-plus acres at the north end of the site and then the existing green buffer between the property line and the highway, and then the property line and Route 6, you get this large green buffer, you know, between the more public areas and obviously the park immediately to the east. Just to contrast, in the center of the site, we have a number of amenities and common space for use by the residents of the AMS community. That includes water features, a pool, athletic facilities, a clubhouse with various uses inside. These are the residential buildings in yellow. The gray in the building is the clubhouse. And this is another aerial view of the existing site, Teconic in that lower-left corner. North is upper-left. And this is a photo montage putting a rendering, aerial view of the rendering of the buildings in to that view. This is another conceptual rendering from within the site. This is looking from one of the buildings at the south end, looking across the water feature to some of the other buildings beyond. And here, an aerial view looking from the north back south. Obviously, the tennis courts and ball courts along the left side. I'll say this is part of the ring road walking path. You can see sort of up there, I can't click. I might be able to point with my laser. No, won't work. You can just sort of see the, I don't know why I rendered or put a bus, but the Teconic there. And then again, the ring roads within, obviously the clubhouse and some of the four-story buildings beyond. Zoning summary, I believe this is in a packet. We, part of the submission, breaking down sort of the existing, the proposed zoning, which Ms. Garrus can get into in more detail, and then the actual proposed numbers for the project. And then just really wrapping up with, again, the view looking north. I do tend to talk a bit quickly, so if there's any questions or you want me to go over again, just let me know.
And I just wanted to mention a couple of things too as well. We recognize that the Teconic is scenic byway, and so that's been certainly taken into account in designing the property, maintaining that buffer to make sure that we maintain that scenic byway. You won't be able to see any more of the project that's being proposed from the Teconic than what you see today of the existing buildings that are there. In addition, I think Stuart's worked the design of the buildings into the topography to be able to use that topography to result in the least amount of disturbance to slopes and other natural features. And then in addition to that, been designed again so that you are not going to see the height of the building from the Teconic, because they'll be buffered by the tree, so.
But both, yeah, as Ms. Garrus said, both in terms of working with the topography, the existing tree line, and then a setback from the highway.
You did a great job with the presentation, and the renderings are absolutely fantastic. I mean, it really is incredible what they could do.
No questions either. That looks great.
Oh, it's awesome.
So this is a referral for the town board for just the zoning change at this point?
The rezoning, yeah.
Right. Anything on your end gets flagged?
Well, you know, it's a change from the existing zoning, so that's really the big...
Right.
Big issue. And basically, you know, whether it finds support in the comprehensive plan or not. So that's, I think, kind of the big overriding issues, you know, in terms of rezoning this property to this use. Then, of course, whether or not you think the use itself makes sense on that particular piece of property, I think. So I think those are the issues.
The one thing I recall from the unicorn application when they came in is when the seniors came out and really were very, I want to say loud, it's probably the incorrect...
You mean the Hill property?
Involved.
Involved. And they were very concerned about the senior housing in the community in Yorktown. And I remember that was kind of a split, that meeting. But we probably had a dozen seniors come out and were very much in favor of seeing some kind of housing.
Seniors are much in favor of this type of housing, absolutely.
We'd like to call it downsizing to luxury. Expect it to be, you know, a luxurious community with a lot of amenities. You know, as Stuart mentioned, Ryan mentioned, you know, geared towards active adults.
Oz is...
Closer to the mic.
Gotta get closer to the mic. That's the wizard in the back.
I could talk the paint off that wall, so I don't think it's necessary. But just, you know, wanted to let you know about that. To tell you a little bit more, in addition to the rezoning that we're asking for, we're also asking for some minor modifications to RSP2, and that is increased density on sites that are greater than 25 acres. So this is a 35-acre site, and so it would limit the sites that could be affected by this proposed zoning amendment.
And how long's the current site been vacant?
Well, we're the contract bandee of the property. I think it's been several years.
Have you got any idea?
Of what?
How long it's been vacant?
It's been vacant for a number of years. Yeah.
Was it ever full? I mean, I...
No, it was full at one time, but actually, honestly, for a short period, because the second building is fairly new. It's done in the time that I've been here.
Do we need to think about impact, traffic impact beyond the property? Where it comes out under Route 6, and you know, if there's, if that campus, if you will, was full, it'd be interesting to know how many cars were coming and going every, you know, every day, because it would be a similar kind of pattern.
Right, so we're looking at that, and we are going to end up having to look at that in connection with all this. One of the things that we find is that typically with office, there is an AM and a PM peak, and those AM and PM peaks are much more intense than a residential community where people are sort of staggered times that they're leaving. You know, if they're retired, maybe they're not leaving, maybe they're staying there, and you're, you know, utilizing all the amenities that are there. So those are certainly all the things that we've thought about. And I think that, you know, with regard to what Mr. Tegger was saying too, in terms of comprehensive plan and other things, you know, as you know, your comprehensive plan is fairly old, I guess, you know, it's all relative. But, you know, 2010 plan. I have been in this business for a long time, and one of the things that we're finding with these kinds of campuses is that, one, there's far less demand for office space in general. There's far less demand for this kind of office space, not only in Westchester, but all over, because people are gravitating away from that enclosed campus type of office environment, and they're locating, for example, closer to trains and public transportation. And, you know, so there's the need to be able to repurpose this property to preserve the value of it, not only for the taxpayers in the community, but also for the owner of the property. So, you know, we think it's an appropriate reuse of this property. We hope you agree. I think it's been very tastefully designed. We know that we have work to do, not only with the town board in connection with the rezoning, but if they do in fact approve the rezoning, then when we come back to you in connection with site plan.
I think in one respect, the location is really...
Perfect.
It is perfect. I mean, you got across the street, the other side of the Teconic, you got similar type development. It's really off the beaten path, just like when Costco went through, obviously it's a very sensitive view shed, so that's going to have to get looked at very closely. That area, traffic is a problem. The roadway system there is not optimal, to say it kindly. So that's really going to have to get looked at.
Yeah, but you got to figure, the road does not trans, go through a lot of property. Just if you want to get off and get on the Teconic, you got a short ride.
Oh, you got a short ride.
You only got five minutes.
No, location to the Teconic, it's like, that's like a train. Does anybody have to leave campus to get anything if they didn't want to?
Groceries.
Is there any commercial hung on to be on there?
No.
Nothing, okay.
Would it be a shuttle bus or anything like that to local shopping centers?
I don't think that we've gotten that far.
Yeah, we haven't gotten that far in terms of taking consideration this demographic, but we have...
Go to the mic.
Yeah, no, we're certainly looking into everything for this site, understanding that people need to get groceries, and this demographic may benefit from it. But, you know, we haven't gotten there yet. It's something we're definitely looking to.
On similar sites that you've had already, do you have any shuttle busing there?
No, I mean, the one site in Evesham, New Jersey, that's very close to many supermarkets and shopping, so we're not doing anything there.
And if this gets built, are you guys planning to stay in and managing it? Because I know you mentioned that one other site that you had said that you sold it off or something like that, or you...
Yeah, so we look at every site differently. Some sites we hold, some sites we sell. This, to us, we see it as a blue chip asset, and it's a great site, great location, and we would love to stay in on it.
Rich, as you always say, the devil's in the details, but I think the issue in front of us is...
Just zoning.
Clear, easy on.
Yeah. Rezone it.
I have one concern that you may well have in your plans, and I don't mean to start looking at the site plan at this point. But one of the concerns I have about that site in general, and I had it when it was in office use, is that there's one way in and one way out. And if it's different, a slightly different concern, if you've got an office use where people are not there 24 hours a day, but you're going to have a large number of people, and I'd like to see you address the issue of a secondary means of egress. Not that it be a permanent everyday use, but it may be an emergency use, either through an adjacent property or somehow, or somehow in your design, so that there is a way to get emergency vehicles in and out and people to get in and out. Because if that roadway in gets blocked...
Yep, we will certainly look at that. You know, as you know, we've got the park to the north, Teconic to the west, but we'll certainly take a look.
Yeah. I mean, I have a preconceived idea about what it should be. I just think there's enough room to, design-wise, to address that issue. And that's, to me, that's a major concern.
You know, you got the golf course right across the street there, when that gets going, which hopefully is not too far away. All right, we have any concerns?
No concerns.
Nope. All right. So we'll get it warm and fuzzy?
On the use?
Yeah.
And the rezoning? Sure.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll see you at the second part.
Go check out the Kmart.
It's unbelievable, the rendering.
Yes, beautiful.
Really is. Incredible what they could do.
The third one? Dan can maybe just talk for a second one?
You want to make Grace wait, is what you're saying? All right, so we'll take number five, second? All right, so we're going to move the agenda around a little bit. Next, we have another town board referral. This is the Gardenia Hotel. Location's 1952 Commerce Street. Unbelievable, the renderings of the inside of the place, just...
Oh, did you see the, you got a book?
It looks real. I mean, it's incredible what...
Really outdid yourself, Mike.
Holy Christ.
I appreciate you switching the batting order here.
What's that?
I appreciate you switching the batting order.
Robin's idea.
It's nice. It's, thank you for the courtesy. Wonderful, thank you. Anyhow, you know, I'm just a little unclear as to if this is the referral from the town board as to whether or not the town board should refer it back to you for approval process. I'm assuming that this is the beginning of the approval process.
This is the...
Or is this a referral to whether it should be referred?
This is the referral as to whether it should be referred.
Okay, all right. It just, you know, it's a...
Reviewed under the overlay district.
All right. Well, in that case, I'm a bit confused because this use is only allowed in the overlay district, not allowed anywhere else, number one. And number two, we just went through the process of creating the legislation to set the area in bulk requirements for this use within the overlay district. So if it's just here to whether or not the town board should refer it to you for approval, I'm hoping that, I know it got, you guys liked the idea and the project when you first introduced, and I think the town board has already made the decision that they're well in favor of it because they've gone through the process of zoning it into that district and then adopting thereafter the area in bulk requirements for that use within the overlay district. But to the degree you have any concerns...
We are here. Really is unbelievable. Have you seen this?
I haven't seen the book, but it's just...
So John, is the, is, whether it's in a minute or five minutes, is the result of what we're looking for, a memo back to the town board saying, yes, we think you should go ahead and process the application, and it sits underneath the overlay district? Is that essentially what they're looking for?
That's basically it, but as you recall, there's those eight criteria in the law that the town board is weighing the project kind of against. So that's really what they're looking at. I mean, if you agree with those, then you can so state. Or you can be a little bit more generic and say this project, you know, is what the overlay district envisioned and is a well-worthy project for, you know, to be reviewed under that law.
And we did a, I don't know if they, John, I don't know if they have the memo. We sent the memo to the town board.
It's in the package.
Yeah. It's in there, essentially, and essentially, again, it's, it's obviously consistent with the overlay district because it's only was, its genesis was within the overlay district legislation in and of itself.
Let's look through it real quick. So A is whether the project is consistent with the general goals of the comprehensive plan. I think they created this overlay district...
That's what they did.
Invite. B, whether the project will likely be detrimental, be detrimental to the character of its immediate neighboring properties or the district at town at large.
It can't be really detrimental to the neighborhood. It's got an 80-year-old building next to it.
This is what you, this is what the whole envisioned, this kind of use was envisioned by the overlay district. If this doesn't, this doesn't fly, nothing will fly.
This is what the town, this is something the town needs.
Right, there's, you know, there's more facets to it, really. I mean, obviously, it's, it's a really decent-looking building. It will bring a type of use that people have been looking for. It's unique in that category of uses as a boutique hotel, as opposed to a regular chain hotel. You know, the other part, the kind of differing part is its size in relation to its site.
Yep.
Whether or not that is overwhelming the site.
Yep.
Whether it, in that regard, will change the character. I would point out that on either side of it, you have two large buildings. One of them is probably maxed out under the existing code, so it's right there at the top height. You know, this will be a little higher than that in a certain point. But I mean, that would be a question that you might ask yourself and opine on if you thought it was outside of what should happen in terms of its bulk and mass and so on and so forth. But certainly the use, I think everyone understands that it fits well within what the uses are and what Yorktown heights might benefit from, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Right. Okay, we'll keep going and C, whether the scope of the project will likely cause operational difficulties on the site that we've potentially negatively affect health, safety, and welfare of the public. D, whether the town's infrastructure is capable of servicing the project or the impacts or deficiencies of the infrastructure can be appropriately mitigated. E, whether the project will eliminate a blight or potential blight within the district. F, whether the project is consistent with the goals and intent of the overlay district. G, whether the project is consistent with the requirements of the overlay district and does not exceed the limitations or requirements set forth therein. And H, whether the project is likely to contribute to the economic development of the district and the town at large. Now, I know when the Cure Street building went in, that was a big change to that, that street. I happen to love that building.
Yes, I do too.
I think it's a very attractive building. I, you know, wanted to see that as kind of the catalyst to get other changes in that area.
And that was, that was met with a lot of...
Yeah.
Headwind, too, and it's turned out to
Beautiful.
It's always, but it's always the case, it's always a chicken little type of, you know, the sky's gonna fall type of thing, it's never had.
And, and that project raises a similar question, because it was a small site.
Yeah.
And the building did use every bit of site
Yeah.
that it could, and so in terms of, and I think there was some discussion about this during that review, whether or not it was too much for that site in terms of, uh, intensity, but also in terms of its massing and so on and so forth. I happen to think that it is a big improvement to the Keer Street corridor there.
Yeah.
I think it's a really good project, I think it is well-done architecturally. I actually like its relationship to the street, it's close to the street. I think it did really wonders for there, despite the fact that one could sit and look at the plan and say, "This is a lot on this little site." It turned out to work out pretty well, so I think it's a similar question here.
This would be a great focal point for Com- uh, for Commerce Street as well. It would really transition everything.
You know, when I think about the municipalities that I've worked in and some of the projects, when I was in North Castle, there was the Almong Square, which was in the center of town, but it was a there was a food store, bunch of mixed use, and people were really up in arms about that project.
It turned out wonderful.
Beautiful. Harry Town with the waterfront. You know, you could pick any municipality, and something that's, you know, this is a smaller lot. I know we discussed when it first came to us, the parking, uh, and one of the, the things that we kind of pointed out as a, this board and myself, was there's a sea
Of parking in the area.
Of course.
Right?
Yep.
Our Yorktown building right next door, which I'm sure is not in operation generally without certain events and special events. When this would be in operation, there's park everywhere you turn around there, there's on-street parking, there's...
Another thing we gotta remember, is that a lot of people are taking ovens now. Anytime
No, they don't drive, yeah.
Anytime somebody brings up the parking in the Heights area, just you all have to do is turn to the San Gennaro office where you get thousands and thousands and thousands of people that come into town over five days in the middle of your, your business district, and parking is not, never a problem. Never. It, it's, you know, the, the issue for Yorktown Heights, it's more blacktop than it is actual, you know, enterprises, and that's what's gotta change, and that's why you, this is perfect. Actually, you know, you, you should, you have to be very grateful, and you should be welcoming something like this, because basically, it's the idea behind the overlay district to begin with, to, to invite this in. You've got an application coming in very early after having legislated the overlay district, and you, you're gonna see if it works or not, and you, there's no downside to this. Right now, you're dealing with a vacant building, and you're dealing with a use that is fairly, uh, low int- very low-intensity commercially used for the square footage of the, of the building itself, in a, in an area where you have a sea of parking all over the place. I think it's, it's, you know, the only thing of, you know, I gotta be frank with you, I mean, the concern that I, I have, not only as an advocate for the applicant, but as a former, you know, town official in, in, in dealing with these things, is that, uh, you don't wanna, you don't, delays is, you, you're gonna lose it. And, uh, you know, there are, there are pressures, the economies have changed over the last year, so I really implore that, you know, speak, look at, with, look at this with some urgency. Um, you know, but disappointed that we're going through one, an additional step here.
Well, I think, uh, that, and I, every time I hear delays, and with respect to this board, I think this board has been very good about keeping things on track.
You haven't gotten it yet, that's why, we're trying to, we're trying to get it to you.
But we
Believe me, we're trying, it's all we're trying to do, is trying to get it in front of you.
Saw this once before.
Confidence in you guys.
I think there was a very strong response from the board. I, I think at the time, we said this is something that we thought was very good for the town. Be really nice to have something unique like this in town, some kind of attraction, no different than Trader Joe's, or now, I gotta tell you that Uncle Giuseppe's is just off the charts awesome, I love that place. Um, but it, you need those kinds of changes, you need that redevelopment.
Of course.
You need to bring people into Yorktown.
Yeah, well, I'm dying to get it in front of you guys, so.
Well, I just, as one person, I think we can work past a lot of these concerns that we might have, so I
Of course.
Clearly, I'm in favor of this project as a whole.
I agree. Push it on.
Any concerns?
No concerns.
No, you want it like an eight-point memo, or?
Yeah.
That I'll, I'll run by you before I send over?
Yeah, I think we go through each one of the
And you, you don't have to be all eight.
Yes.
These are just, it's sort of like those of you who ever have been on the zoning board, area variance, you have five considerations you have to balance.
Yeah.
That's what these eight are. You don't have to prove each of the eight, you just have to take into account each of the eight, and then...
Yeah, but on, on every point, this passes, passes muster, and I think that's been, you know, that's just, you know, we, you can decipher that just from the legislative intent in putting this in the overlay zone to begin with, and the recent legislation as to the ar- area in bulk requirements, but we really, we'd like to expedite this as quickly as we possibly can, get it back to you as soon as we can, so we can start moving on. We, I, I, I fear that the town may lose this opportunity, and I don't say that, you know, lightly. It's, uh, something that's, uh, I think it's a great project and something that you have to consider.
Oh, I think, listen, if, if you look at that book, if it's anything like that book, you know, right now, we do have a town board referral, this isn't an application in front of us for, you know, the detailed review. Um, so we can get that memo, and put it together, go point by point. Jim, any concerns?
No.
Anything from the board?
Bingo. No. I'm good.
Good?
Good.
Okay.
I appreciate your time, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna keep the book. I don't know where it went.
What?
Oh, Nancy's got it.
It's over there.
It's real, Matt, you're gonna walk out without it.
Fifteen? Did you say fifteen?
You realize the whole table's mic'd up, right?
Fifteen what?
Hi, Joe.
I got you.
Thanks for listening to what I had to say.
You can tell your wife you were brilliant today.
Everything good?
Everything's good.
All right, good. Very nice. Hopefully, everything's well on your end. All right, next, we have our third and last town board referral. This is at 79 Summerston, Summerston Road. Location is the same. Uh, this is an application for wetland permit and stormwater management permit to install an in-ground swimming pool and related stormwater management system and a wetland buffer. Hi, Dan.
Nobody here?
I guess Dan's here. Yeah, so it looks like they got an above-ground pool now?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the issue here is the, um, in our, um, local law, the thresholds for town board approvals, but this particular application is complicated because the proposed pool is in a, a wetland buffer for both a, um, local wetlands and a state wetlands. So hence, um, town board is, uh, the approval authority on this, but you're seeing this as a referral. So if you looked at the plans, I mean, it's, you know, in any other context, it wouldn't be a big deal, except that it's, it's up against, uh, it's the proposed works completely in a, in a buffer.
Did they do any digging to figure out if there's water that will prevent, do the cul-de-sacs or anything? Use of the cul-de-sac?
Um, they, they didn't do the soil testing yet.
From the pictures, it looks like it ripped up everything.
I think there's different rear yards there.
Yeah.
Any engineering concerns?
No, I mean, we'll, you know, if, if they can get all their state permits, then, you know, we'll, we'll, uh, drill into the stormwater on this.
When, when would you do the, the, you would do like deep holes, right?
Right, you would do deep holes, I mean, the, the scenarios are, you know, as you go further back on the property, it's more likely you might encounter water, so there's two ways to approach it, you know, whether you can use a low-profile infiltrator, uh, alternatively, um, what we could look at doing is if the front of the yard is drier, instead of trying to get the, to capture and treat the runoff from the new impervious, we'd pick up the roof of the existing house in the front, if, if that, that ends up being the scenario, or, you know, possibly looking at a rain garden or, you know, some other solution that would be more tolerant with the rainwater scenario.
And, and that, that's better done before the approval, I would expect?
No, it's gonna be part of the approval, but...
No, wouldn't you want to know where this stuff is gonna go, and what type of, you know, measures will be used prior to sending them off on, with an approval?
Well, this is what the applicants submitted, and it's here in a referral, so we'll all be reporting back to the town board, so, you know, like I say, some of this stuff may have to change, but this is the first anybody seeing it.
Okay.
So that's the story.
So the existing house, uh, has variances already, it looks like? Does the pool have to meet the side yard setback, or is that?
Yes, it does.
It does, so they're looking for a variance?
Uh, okay, I can't read it on the one I'm looking at.
Just looks like that they have a 25-foot setback, side setback, which goes through the middle of the pool.
Well, it's a half-acre zone, so it's, uh, what is it, uh?
Looks like there was a
Fifteen, fifteen forty, I think, fifteen forty combined. He's got fifteen on the one side.
Well, it looks like they're putting a garage in, too.
Where you see the garage?
It says one-story attached garage. See this, uh, last page?
I believe that's existing.
It's not shown on the first page. On sheet, uh...
Yep, you're right.
So that would have to get ta- taken into consideration, too. Although it's proposed to be on the asphalt driveway, which looks like it's getting, might be less impervious. No, they're increasing the size in front.
Well, if you look at the pictures, that big garage does not exist.
Yeah, this is very, you know, varying, it looks like there's three different scenarios here. The second page has the
There's no garage.
Garage without the pool.
Yeah, so according to this, then, the, the garage addition would absolutely need a variance, and then, I'm not sure if the, the side yard setback changes in the rear yard.
So should this be?
That may, perhaps that's why they're showing the two different setbacks.
So then, who, who sees this first? What would be the appropriate?
Well, typically, for instance, when you have a similar situation in front of this board, you would review it, and then you would get to a point where you think it's a viable project, then you would refer to the zoning board for variances, then it would come back with the variances, and you'd approve it.
And then, in this case, it's town board, so...
Right.
Well, they should probably do the same thing. I, I don't think they should, it's not the best thing to approve the project before the var- variances, because you can't tell whether the variances will be granted.
Right, right, right.
You know, who knows what will happen?
And it's just, there's three different scenarios here.
This is in a floodplain as well, I believe.
What I don't understand is the orientation of the pool in the back of the house puts it in the side yard setback. If they rotated the pool 100, or 90 degrees, so it was vertical, they would be out of the setback. So I don't know why they're...
Further, further into the buffer and closer to the wetlands. But the, the, the issue to check is, is, is a, um, from whether the, the, the normal side yard setback applies, um, 'cause I think it would be like considered an accessory structure. So after, the building inspector will have to weigh in on that one.
But I'm, I'm just wondering, is, is there been a conversation?
Not when it's attached part of the main structure.
I'm talking about the pool.
Yeah, oh, oh, the pool, yeah.
Yeah, no, the main structure, absolutely.
Has anyone spoken with the applicant about an alternate design that, that seems to me to scream of
Ten, ten pounds and a five-pound bag?
No, I mean, if you turn the pool, I think you'd eliminate...
But that's gonna be an issue with the DEC.
But if you turn, if you turn the pool, it doesn't necessarily need to be, have its line where this line is from front to back. It can move closer to this patio.
Exactly.
Seems to me, I would, I would want it close to the patio.
Right.
I don't know why they have it another 15, 20 feet from the patio.
I'm just saying the design of this is in question to me, or it seems that there's other solutions that are kind of screaming for somebody to look at them, and...
I think you're right.
So I don't know if it's appropriate that we comment on that as part of our response, but...
Maybe you should just have the applicant come in, they should have been here, but they aren't, maybe notify them that we have some questions and we need...
It seems to me they've gone way down the road of engineering all of this before
They talked to anybody.
Yeah, before they discussed the, the design, and I think you could design your way out of a lot of the issues.
I'll, I'll reach out to the engineer and, and discuss with him what we, we kicked around this evening, and...
He's a very good engineer.
I think you need to pull him in the room, just like Jim said. They, they might have a, they might have a reason for, you know, where we can't get the reason out of them now, they're not here.
So are the cul-de-sacs for, for the pool, or, or for stormwater and the pool? Because it looks like there's one, at least one for a draw, it says drawdown of the pool.
Yeah, that's, well, that's part of it. I mean, I, I don't believe we've got a full SWIP on this one yet.
Okay.
So that's, I'm gonna say, he just submitted, and it just automatically just went into referral mode.
Yep. Got it.
What, what flood zone is this in?
I'm sorry?
What zone is this in?
It's, uh, R120.
No, I mean flood.
Oh, flood, um, not sure.
You said it was in the flood zone, right?
Well, it's
In the flood zone, I'm not sure which...
This, this is one of those areas where there are established flood elevations.
Okay.
You know, it's just FEMA just draws a rough line and wishes you well.
Yeah, go get insurance. I mean, it looks like it's in keeping with the, the neighborhood, I think we just need, we need to get clarity on what, you know, which one of these are actually going with.
Did we, did we answer the question of whether the garage is part of our discussion, or?
There's three different options here, I think, there's the existing...
Yeah, but it's not on the application, I don't think. If you read the applicant's description, it looks like they're just concentrating on the pool right now.
So I'm just wondering why the drawings are...
I don't know.
Well, that's a pretty big garage.
Yeah.
And so, for instance, there was an application here in town, I don't know, five, eight years ago, maybe, maybe more, 10, which became a real controversy.
Was a big garage.
Because it was a big garage, and it dwarfed this, the home, and so that there was all manner of, of discussion about that from, you know, proportion and, and mass and so on and so forth, to just too damn large on such a small, you know, all of that, so. I, I would say it's a, it's a pertinent discussion point for at least the town board to be aware of and possibly have with the applicant.
Sorry.
Actually, you know, you know, maybe the case on this is they may have already submitted to the building department, is, and, and just it came through the engineering department for the, um, the wetlands permit, so, um...
Probably true.
So I would assume those other zoning issues are being dealt with with that.
Right, well, one thing could be that it's labeled, so everybody knows what tech's going on.
You should have been here.
All right.
Also, they can say, "Well, it was on the drawings you, you know."
Yeah.
"You've looked at the drawings, and it's been there all the time," which I'm looking at, so I'm, that's, I think it's relevant for us to question it, at least, and...
Well, I mean, I, you know, I, I'm looking at it, and I'm saying it, it could very well become the dominant feature of the home, and I don't know if that's what you really want, not necessarily you, you regulate that or anything like that, they certainly can do that if they wish, but that would be a kind of a detraction to me, but...
So it's only one story, too, so, I mean, it's, you know, being attached to a two-story home.
Yep. The only thing is, we just don't have the benefit of what it might look like, that's all.
All right, so we need some more information, and we need to see the applicant.
Okay.
All right.
Murray motion to close.
Is there a second?
A second?
Nancy? All in the paper.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you very much.
That beat the record.
No.
Aaron had that beat.